Where do you want the final carry forward budgets? Both of them, Carolyn? Is there anything you'd like to preface questions?
No, your worship.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Vansh?
Most of these carry forwards, Carolyn, would it be fair to characterise them as basically work in progress or NZTA-funded planning in progress? Is most of the 19 million in that category?
Three worship, I'd categorise them as, they should all be projects that are underway or that have been delayed for some reason and particularly where we don't have an ongoing budget line for them or that ongoing budget line is already committed.
And what would be the effect of this council deciding not to allow the carry forwards? Would we end up saving essentially $19 million and doing without a few projects in the future?
Your worship, just to clarify the question, you're talking about the full $19 million worth of carry forwards?
Yes, that's what the recommendation is for, it's for $19 million worth of carry forwards.
Yes, because most of these carry forwards we included, we council approved them in April because our managers forecast in April what they're expecting their carry forwards to be at the end of the year. So, once we get through to the end of June, we then, because the forecaster will have adjustments to what they forecasted and there are also a few new carry forwards. And so what we'd probably find is that a lot of this expenditure would already be committed for the ones that you've already approved. So for anything new, we would have to come back to you with what the impact might be if you didn't approve them.
And is it, is it clear what is new in this?
Yes, so column, if you look at the big A, if you've got an A3 sheet or a spreadsheet, so column G is where the managers will have adjusted what they'd forecast in April, and column H are the new requests. So the first, for example, the first new request there is for tourism establishment costs to do with Enterprise Dunedin for $78,000. Oh, sorry, are your columns different? I apologise. Sorry about that. Yes, we do have different columns. Yep, sorry, councillor, the adjustments are in column I on your sheet and the new requests are in column J.
Thank you very much.
Carolyn, I firstly apologise because this is perhaps something I should have foreshadowed earlier but it only occurred to me this morning. The Ocean Beach holding pattern, the $200,000 that we're carrying forward, how much are we holding, or do you know how much we're holding on the balance sheet already with that in that regard?
How much we've spent or how much we've got in our budget?
We, how much we've, we're carrying this forward again, it's unspent money which has been carried forward against a future project and I'm not clear as to, given that that was originally a 2012 DCC resolution, CDC resolution I should say, whether we've carried forward money in previous years as well and to the, so do you have, off the top of your head, do you know?
Three worship, yes, so this time last year we carried forward $123,000 for this.
So we'd be carrying forward now about $320,000?
So based, so of that, they would have had a budget in the last financial year and so now we've got this to carry forward, so the carry forward has grown.
It's just, the reason, the reason I ask the question is, it just, it strikes me as being slightly odd to be carrying forward money against a project that ultimately you're going to vote funds for, because in essence all we're doing is sticking it in the bank at 3% and paying interest at 7% on our debt and I don't. I can understand with the likes of the St Clair Seawall, we just don't know what we're going to spend next year, but this is a slightly different situation. So, does it warrant being carried forward?
Well, it is a different situation, but what we do do is, so we have a high level of carry forwards here and a lot of them have been rate funded in the past and so that's often one of the main reasons for us being later in drawing down our actual borrowings. So we won't borrow money if we're going to have it sitting in the bank because we're behind on these carry forward projects. If that helps. What I can do is find out some more information for you on this one. So this carry forward was based on a report that they'd put through to Community Development Committee, so they didn't end up carrying forward the full amount that was unspent. So I can send councillors some further information on that.
Well, I suppose I'm really querying, do we actually need to carry it forward? It's not as if we're holding it against an unforeseen set of circumstances that could occur at any time. We're essentially holding it as if you like, an advance deposit on a significant piece of work involving us that we will subsequently do sometime in the future and it just doesn't strike me as being good economics to do that. So that's, it's the only one on this list that I feel that that applies to, so I'm really seeking some advice from all of you.
Yeah, well, in some cases, some of the carry forward, you know, applications don't come forward if we think that, you know, they need to go into the next LTP round and this one might be in that case.
Mr Mackenzie, would you like to make a comment?
Oh, sorry, this one was actually discussed earlier in the year anyway, this was discussed in the April part of the carry forwards and we did have a round EOT discussion about the level of carry forward because when it was originally requested, it was actually significantly higher than this. So what we've brought it back to is a more manageable level because they're also looking at, my understanding is that some of this money is for consultancy work to look at what is actually going to be required. But whether it's going to be spent in the current financial year, I can't put my hand on the heart of the stage and say yes or no. But also taking Carolyn's point, we don't actually borrow for this type of activity at this stage, it's only when we incur the expenditure. So we're not allowing for that or we don't need that.
Look, I accept that, but it's just that, and if you tell me that we may need this money for consultancy works in the current financial year, then that's fine, I'm prepared to live, I'm prepared to live with that. It's only if we're building up a, effectively a capital expenditure fund for some time in the future, that just doesn't strike me as being sensible.
We're not. It's operating as opposed to capital.
Councillor Vansh, do you have another question?
Yes, if we look at roading and footpaths, for instance, we've got a more than $3 million carry forward under column K. When that was approved in the draft annual plan, it would have had a certain amount of NZTA funding sort of approved for it. Does it still have that same amount of NZTA funding now that it's in a carry forward situation?
Three worship, yes, we do still, if NZTA subsidies are applicable, we still get them if they're carried forward.
And they'll still be at the 65% rate, is it?
Well, I think some of them vary on here, but the ones that, if they were at 65%, they still will be, just because the timing's different, it doesn't change that.
And the carry forward of $200,000 for the Events Attraction Fund at Forsyth Bar, the one that's designed to leverage the stadium as economic benefit to the wider city. I'm sure I'm not the only one that's been rather disappointed that the budget has in the past not yielded anything like expectations and wonder what I should do if I wish to vote against this particular part of the carry forwards, recognising that some of the other parts of the carry forwards do make sense.
You could request that I take it separately if that's what you are asking.
Aye, so we have the option today to separately, line by line, look at these carry forwards?
I would hesitate to go down the route of doing every line individually, but if there was a particular one that you wish to take separately or if you wish to qualify your vote, then that's the other option.
Okay, fine. Final question then regarding the $200,000 carry forward for the stadium's economic benefit to the wider city. I'm wondering, do we have any evidence thus far of the money being spent effectively? Perhaps this is one for Grant.
So what I can say is that the stadium is looking at a number of events to be brought to the city, obviously there are negotiations with the promoters and once they have been secured, they'll then come back to council and we call on those funds as appropriate. Can I also add that, once again, that particular column there G was actually approved earlier in the year by council?
Yes, yeah, I remember, I remember voting against it then as well. What my question really was is, do we have any evidence that the monies for this fund that have been previously spent actually yielded anything that wouldn't otherwise have happened?
Can I suggest that it's a question that we can't reasonably expect the council to have an answer for here in this context?
Perhaps Grant might be able to tell me.
Possibly, just in this context. Right, are there any further speakers? Right, would someone like to, now councillor Staines will move and is your seconded? Councillor Lord, now councillor Vansh, you specifically want that piece, that line left out?
No, no, I don't want to pick on the stadium yet again, we've had a fair crack at that over the, over the years. But what I would like is to register a general disquiet that we have an executive leadership team here reviewing and approving spending of really significant amounts being carried forward. I recognise that a lot of it has been ticked off in the past, but the whole idea of carry forwards when we're $600 million in debt and that we can just keep rolling on and we can just keep spending and we can just keep doing these things, it's rendalent for me of quantitative easing, this idea that you can just somehow keep doing it. I'm very concerned and not quite sure actually how I should vote on this. If anyone wants to give me some direction as to how I express my unease about the continuing spending on this sort of thing.
We're very keen to get it. But Mr Mackenzie wishes to make a comment.
I guess the comment I would say is that this list has had a fair bit of scrutiny. The list was larger and it has been significantly knocked back from what it originally was proposed. So EOT is very, very conscious of the financial situation councils in and we're doing everything we can to reduce the impact on rates for the city.
Thank you very much, I remember hearing the same thing from Mr Harland not that long ago.
Councillor Staines, do you wish to speak to the move? Councillor Lord, do you wish to speak to it? Any other speakers? All right, I'm going to put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Thank you. Right, we're on to item 22, draft submission on the draft Government Policy Statement on Land Transport. Both of the transportation team. Is there anything you would like to preface questions with? Or do you want to extract the questions?
No questions, I believe. The Government Policy Statement on Land Transport, it's a legislative requirement from the Land Transport Management Act in 2003. It conveys the government's priorities for investment from the National Land Transport Fund. So our submission seeks a couple of clarifications and raises some other matters for consideration by the Ministry of Transport.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Vansh?
On 22.5, under number 10, it says, "We would like to see the at reasonable cost caveat removed from the GPS for cycling and road safety." I can't imagine a more racially insensitive statement actually, but when you say that you'd like to see at reasonable cost caveat removed, are you suggesting that you're quite happy to have cycling and road safety at unreasonable cost? Would that not be the implication?
No, that's not what that's meant to imply. For some reason the GPS has added that caveat just to the cycling class and the safety class, whereas it hasn't added that to any of the other classes. So in terms of, I guess, an equitable approach to transportation, our view is that why would you add that caveat to specific things and not add it to everything?
So why doesn't your recommendation or submission say that? Why does it say you don't want at reasonable cost involved here? Surely at reasonable cost is the very least we should be asking for. If it's not asked for other areas, should you not say that about the other areas?
We could do that.
I mean, I simply can't, okay, sorry, that was my question.
Further questions? Councillor Macktavish?
A couple of questions, the first is in relation to point eight, talks about public transport such as public transport and cycle networks, but it doesn't refer to rail transport and I just wondered whether it was also with, with staff, there are a reason why staff excluded rail transport from that particular clause?
Yeah, just because the GPS doesn't cover rail transport.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense, thank you. The second question is, the government, I see, has just announced this afternoon $100 million for urban cycleways. Would you require some additional room in your, in this, in this motion to allow you to refer to that new announcement or to add stress to this, your submission in relation to that new announcement?
With most of the funding classes, you acquire a co-funding contribution and because council has a limited budget, they fund so much for walking and cycling and so we can only get NZTA share that's in proportion to our own. In section eight, it does talk about, we'd like the GPS to consider alternative funding mechanisms for walking and cycling activity class, so that announcement is something that is really great news and is, I think that would fit under there.
Well, I think in order to keep it relevant, your worship, we might want to add reference to that announcement that's just come through today. The final question that I have is, is just in relation to the point about, under point nine, the point is made about the decline in bus transit here in the last point, which I think is a very relevant thing to highlight, but does staff not have concern that that might be sending the wrong signal about the demand for improving public transport infrastructure in our city and whether we should also reference ongoing public enthusiasm for public transport improvements and the many thousands of households in Dunedin City without access to a private motor vehicle?
Yeah, I think that would be a valuable thing to add to the submission.
I'm happy to move the motion with those amendments.
Okay, well, I'll log that and we'll come back to you when I've finished questions. And you might look for a secondary on the minute. Okay, thank you. Questions? Okay, they're on. So the recommendation has been moved and seconded. Councillor Macktavish, would you like to just explain the addition, clearly mouth again, so that we're quite, we're all quite clear about what it is you're adding?
Sure, so the government have just announced $100 million for urban cycleways projects. I think staff's indication is that the appropriate place to reference that would be under point eight, so there will be a reference to that added there. And then I'm suggesting that at the end of the unbolded text associated with point nine, we simply continue the sentence saying this represents an ongoing decline in bus patronage, to read, "This represents an ongoing decline in bus patronage despite public enthusiasm or despite demonstrable public enthusiasm for public transport improvements and many thousands of households without car ownership or with to that effect."
Okay.
I will bring them to you.
That's good, thank you. I'll just wait until you've given this to Pam and then you might want to speak to the motion more fully, or do you? You've done it, right. Further, councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, worship, I have a question for the mover, I guess, and that is, just to get clarification around where that fund newly announced comes from and whether that affects the National Land Transport Fund at all and whether those, the figures and percentages that are referred to earlier on in that point would then be out if, if they were affected by this, I'm just.
I don't know. The press release has just come through, so my suggestion is that we leave room for staff to refer to it if appropriate and if it's not appropriate, then that's not done. But it just seems a shame to, given that we're moving this today and that the announcement is made today, to keep it relevant, it would be, I think, useful to make that reference if, if it did, yeah.
Further speakers? Councillor Vansh?
The whole thrust of this submission, as I read it, is basically more money, whether reasonable cost or not, for more cycleways. If we look at number seven, it's particularly by providing alternative transport choices, which has become the speak. Number eight, expand cycle networks in urban areas, we've had a fair amount of expansion already and as I said earlier, I'm over it. The hope for bus patronage and resulting reduction in parking demand has been well and truly dashed for some time now, but we keep flying the flag despite the fact that that hasn't happened. And then number 10, this at reasonable cost caveat being removed. We are seriously submitting on the basis that we don't want at reasonable cost to be included in the submission. I can't possibly see how we can vote for something which is talking about essentially wanting to do some things, some things with unreasonable cost. And we're in number 11, for instance, it says that we should be producing cycle facilities that should be separated from traffic where possible. It's not where reasonable, it's not where affordable, it's where possible. We've got $600 million worth of debt, it's possible we could take our debt to a billion dollars' worth, we do have captive rate payers that would probably allow us to do that. We're talking about spending another $20 million on central city cycleways. Now, if these cycleways were going to produce the safety improvements that have been suggested and if they were modelled on existing cycleways as we get overseas in successful countries like Germany with cycleways, I might be tempted. But here we are, essentially trying to reinvent the two-wheeled separated cycleway, which you simply can't separate at intersections anyway. We're going to spend millions of dollars doing it. If the $20 million is available, and it is available with a big substantial lump of governmental funding from New Zealand Transport, could we not get a much better bang for our buck by persuading New Zealand Transport to put that $20 million instead into an extension at the airport that would give us a long enough runway to actually become a city in this country rather than an ailing small town? Why is it that we are at a time of incredible financial constraint, pouring money into what has been described as the country's first real cycleway system? Why is it that the poorest city in the country is leading the charge in spending money on cycleways when our topography and our climate simply don't warrant that kind of spending? This submission for me is just more of what we don't need and more of what we simply can't afford. I believe we should simply vote against it.
Further speakers?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm aware that councillor Vansh has raised the issue of the at reasonable cost caveat and that staff seemed quite happy to entertain an amendment which would suggest that the at reasonable cost be treated equally across all activity classes and I'm quite happy to include that in my, if that would assuage some of councillor Vansh's concerns, I just thought it would be appropriate to do that.
It would be helpful, it would also be helpful in number 11 if where possible could become where affordable.
You've already, you've already spoken and you actually asked staff if they would consider putting in at reasonable cost to everything, so your wish has been granted if that's, so we can leave it there. I will speak to this before I come back to councillor Macktavish for her write-up reply. In brief, I'm pretty optimistic about this submission and I support it completely and the reason that I'm optimistic about it is clearly the thinking of our staff and this council is very much aligned with that of the government, which has, as has been pointed out just recently, fired another $100 million into cycleways. So clearly, those people who think ahead and clearly about what the risks and resilience into the future and about, about transportation options are all agreed that there needs to be more funding of alternatives to simply motorways. So I would be supporting this submission entirely, along with its amendments of course. Councillor Macktavish, would you like to exercise your write-up reply?
No, other than, oh, super, yeah, so I think if we are to include councillor Vansh's suggestion, it would be that the bolded part of point 10 be replaced with, that at reasonable cost be, I said be included across all activity classes or be treated evenly.
Can I suggest that it be expressed as either it be across all classes or none?
Yeah, all or none, yeah.
But I think we can, rather than trying to work with it completely now, we know what the intention is, obviously.
If everybody is happy with it and the secondary is happy with that approach. Councillor?
You have that seconded, councillor Wilson? Right, I'm going to put it as amended and with the caveat that staff will be expected to tailor this a little for the wording, but you have the direction anyway. I'm going to put it now, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Yes?
Recorded, please.
Item 23, appointments to the Head of Work and Management Trust Board. Sorry? That's up to you. I'm not sure we are voting on your suitability, just don't know if we're going to put you there or not. Just going to put you there or not. Is there any, are there any questions on this? I guess since Michael's at the bottom of it, I would be expected to answer any because there's no staff to speak to this. If there are no questions, I will move from the chair the recommendation that councillors Neville Peaton, Michael would be appointed as council reps to the Hereweka Management Trust Board Incorporated. Second councillor Staines, is there any discussion? Councillor Peaton.
Yeah, if I just could just elaborate a little bit on the project, just for the sake of elaborating. The project, the project from the get-go has been something of a precedent and unique in the city's experience, I think. You all know Harbour Cone, Hereweka, as a landmark on the Otago Peninsula, very centre of the Otago Peninsula, and that property came up for sale and the council purchased it. It purchased it not only because it would continue with the productive values and avoid a subdivision which would affect its landscape values and other values too, but it wanted, the council wanted to have across the board all its values protected, whether it was the heritage or the recreational or biodiversity and so on. So good things take time and this is one of them. And we're here today, and I won't be voting on this, it's councillor Lord and I are nominated, but here to move it forward in terms of its management. There is a management plan, the council signed that off, and now we're into the governance issue. And I'd just like to remind you, if you didn't already know, that this trust is going to be the board of it comprised of five members from the community and two appointed by this council. So just speaking in terms of someone who's been involved with the steering group from the beginning and also as worship, the mayor was there from the beginning as well, that, you know, I think this project is coming to a kind of fruition today on the governance side.
Any other speakers? All right, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Agreed. Karen, thank you. Now, we're on to...
No divisions.
Right, we're on to item 24, Trans-Pacific Partnership Agreement. Tammy, welcome. Is there anything you would like to offer?
Um, I guess just one update is that the Christship City Council considered the Trans-Pacific Partnership last week. At their council meeting, they formally adopted a 12-point resolution and attachment one is its position, and they will also request that local government, New Zealand, also adopt the 12-point resolution of their position. Other than that, the report speaks for itself.
Questions, councillors, with the understanding that it's already been acknowledged that staff have had limited ability to gain a huge amount of information, so we'll ask the questions, but we'll see. Councillor Wiley.
Thank you, worship. Do you believe that there is enough clear information in the open domain to clearly discuss this and make an informed decision?
I don't think that that is a reasonable question to ask if that's asking for their opinion. And staff were charged with bringing us what facts they could pull together, but you've got to make your own call on that one. I don't think it's reasonable to ask staff, they're not making a recommendation on this.
I can understand you, I can understand that, your worship. Therefore, I'd like to move to option three and move that.
Is there a second? Councillor Vandemus. Okay, would you like to speak to that?
Basically, the, looking at the Trans-Pacific Partnership and listening to the submissions that have been before us, you know, they're all talking about information that is at least over 12 months, if not older. A lot of negotiations have taken place in the meantime, and I don't believe that anybody in government or anybody negotiating on behalf of New Zealanders will be putting us at disadvantage. And I therefore think that, you know, we want to essentially work in the best interest of our community and of jobs and of businesses, and we need to really wait for something concrete to come to the table from the government and move forward on that basis.
Mr Chairman, can you just clarify that? I thought you asked for questions, you've accepted a motion.
Oh, I'm, you're quite right, I have spoken to it.
I'd like to ask a question.
So we'll put that on hold, the motion is still standing, but we'll open it up for questions, I apologize for that.
I'd just like to ask if you consider, given the absence of any detailed information, there'd be any intelligent decision to make other than to support option one?
Well, again, thank you for your favour. That's an equally unanswerable question. So, an idea, so I apologize for not allowing more questions. So are there more questions? Right, so we come back to the motion that's in front of us, and councillor Vandemus, you had your hand up.
The reason I support the T, option three, to make no resolution on the TPPA, is that it's my hope that we're going to get some really good, significant leaks about this so that we actually find out what it is that the TPPA is. And only then, when we know what this beast actually is, I think, could we then make a reasonable and informed decision about it. That would be my reason for going for option three. Now, given that we really don't know, and in fact, it would seem that it's designed that we shouldn't know what the ramifications of the TPPA are, I'm concerned that whatever we say is going to be said without really having any idea other than some kind of vague suspicions of what we are actually voting about. If we were to vote for option three, I believe it would give us the opportunity to, a little further down the track, when we get some more authoritative leaks, to actually be able to know what the implications of the Trans-Pacific Partnership are going to be for us, what kind of constraints we're going to have even as a council when the international lawyers of the corporates basically get working through the TPP. So I'm not particularly fussed what particular option we go for now because I don't believe it has much meaning until we know what we're talking about. I just think it would be a wee bit more sort of cautious and wise to go for option three and give us the opportunity of actually having a really proper response to the TPP later on.
Councillor Thompson.
I'd just foreshadow that in the event that this motion were to be lost, I would move option one. I, I'm actually relatively relaxed about this, I know I'm not supposed to be, but I, and I don't lie awake at night worrying about it, but I think that when I work my way through option one, I try to ask myself, well, which of these points do I disagree with? And I can't actually find any that I disagree with. It's not asking me to take a definitive position on anything, it's asking that we understand that what, that we understand fully what it is that we as a country might be embarking on. And it's asking that we not have substantive rights that we currently have taken away from us. And I find it quite difficult to argue with those sentiments. Now, were this an open process, I would probably, I think we have a view that this is not the business of a local body. And if I'm honest, I'm still slightly of that view. But I think that the process potentially has the ability to impact upon us and our city in both potentially negative and positive ways. And one would hope that any government with national interest at its, at the heart of its policies would not sign up to something that impacted upon us negatively or to the extent that it did, that it clearly enabled substantive benefit that outweighed that. And I've never been known to be a supporter of the current government. I doubt that any government is going to ultimately sign up to something that is going to result in such a substantial public reaction that gets them thrown out. So I'm, I am relatively relaxed about it, but I'm not relaxed about the fact that we don't fully understand the process that's taking place here. And so that's why I think we have a right to take a position as a local body. I don't think we're taking a position against this treaty, I don't think we're taking a position that's radical, I don't think we're taking a position that's obstructive, I think we're simply making a statement around some bottom lines that are important to us. And I think that there have been plenty of examples in the past where national policies have been influenced by a whole range of local initiatives. And at the end of the day, that's all this option one does, is to signal that there are some things that are important at a local level and that we want to ensure that we understand that they are being considered and that we are able to see that they're being considered. And even if that is in the fullness of time through a select committee process or whatever, then that'll do me. So I'm prepared to signal that I will move option one should this were to be lost.
Thank you, councillor McTavish.
Your worship, I think councillor Thompson has said everything that I was going to say more articulately than I could. But I would ask the mover and the secondary and whoever else would support the current motion on the table, which of I to XIII they do not agree with? Is it that they don't want to substantially increase access for our market exports, particularly those from the Otago region to the US market? Is it that they would like to undermine pharmac or raise the cost of medical treatments? I'm interested to know which of these are of such, such a negative or potentially would have such a negative impact if we moved them. And I, like councillor Thompson, find it difficult to find one that I would think would have a negative impact on Dunedin. And in response to councillor Vandemus, you know, I have some sympathy for that, but the TPPA draft text, parts of it have been leaked, the chat drawn investment has been leaked, it was leaked, I think, last year, and that showed, for example, that whilst Australia is, in the current text that was leaked, was accepting itself from investor state dispute resolution issues, we weren't. So that has big implications for, so we do have, and I think some of the people who spoke to us during public forum, we're speaking to some of the concerns that they have seen around that draft text. So whilst we may learn more, and of course, it is a moving target and that text, I'm sure, would change over time, I see no problem, and in fact, I see harm that could be done from not taking a preemptive decision as a council, from not being proactive. I don't think we should be in the habit of being reactive as a council, and I'm sure we would all agree with that. Yeah, I think it would be a nice preemptive action for us to take to define the things that are important to us as a nation, as a city, as our government moves to finalize this work that they're underway on. So I would be happily seconding or supporting option one, and I shan't be supporting the current resolution.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. I can't support this either and will join the orderly queue forming to second councillor Thompson's foreshadowed motion, should we get an opportunity to vote on that, perhaps with some slight massaging as suggested by the Tasman District Council when they went through the similar process. Our community have come to us with concerns around a negotiation being, a treaty being negotiated in their name that they have very little understanding of, and I think they have a right to be concerned about that. They also have a right to expect their local government to lobby on behalf of those concerns to central government and the people in charge of those negotiations in the same way we do around their concerns around land transport funding that we've already talked about today, around psychoactive substances, around earthquake-prone buildings, around all pieces of government legislation that we seek to input on whenever they affect our community. And I think the mover and second and supporters of option three are missing the point somewhat by saying that option one, as drafted this charter, is taking a stand as being against the Trans-Pacific Partnership Agreement because that isn't what it's doing. This isn't, this isn't an option about being pro or against trade or even free trade, it's being pro-democracy, it's not being anti-trade. It's about saying that we want to be able to make decisions in the best interests of our community and continue to be able to do that regardless of treaties that are being negotiated in our name. And to go further from the summation presented by councillor McTavish, I also find it difficult to see how this option one can be seen as being against the TPPA when it explicitly says that the agreement be concluded and then goes on to say, you know, to say, should we be able to set our own procurement policy in the best interests of our community? Should we be able to favour local businesses in the way we do things? Do we want to maintain our relationship with Shanghai as we go forward? Do we want to get access to the US markets for our growers and farmers? Do we want to maintain subsidized medicine and public health policy? Do we want to give international business greater influence on our legislation than we do local business? Do we want Hollywood lobbyists and record companies to set up patent and copyright laws on our behalf? Do we want to control our level of privatization and outsourcing as a local government? Do we want to protect our environment and the protections laid out in Titi or lighting the founding document of this nation? And for anybody to be opposed to any of those as rolled out, and that is essentially a summation of this, I too would like to know which specific clauses that councillor Wiley and his cohort find so abhorrent that they couldn't support. So also just foreshadowing the additions potentially courtesy of the Tasman District Council and negotiations, I think it is important that we take net positive benefit to mean something a little broader than wealth creation and economic development and to include social and environmental impacts on that because all too often we see wealth creation and economic development seen as the be-all and end-all when we know that that isn't the case, but we're digressing into fallacies around the supply-side myth. So I cannot support option three, I would gladly, as I've indicated, support option one, should we get the option to vote on that. Thank you.
Councillor Staines.
Thank you, your worship. I support option one, sorry, option, the option that's before us. I can't understand how councillor Hawkins can stand there today and voice the concerns he does around such things as pharmac and healthcare and the risks that TPPA has for that when we have just sat through a presentation by the chief negotiator, Mr David Walker, who told us that the bottom line was that the government has instructed the negotiation team not to compromise our health system. These are why I think I don't, I can't support option one. Option one continues to build fears in the community around areas that we have as councillors today in that briefing, and in fact, there's notes that accompany some of it in these papers, suggest that those fears are not real. I've heard from that negotiator twice, some months apart, the story has not changed. And I think we have a responsibility to our community, if we are going to question anything around the TPPA, to make sure that we have our facts right and that those questions are based around areas where there is a genuine concern. And right now, I don't see that in most of these, following the workshop today, that in most of these areas, there's actually a genuine concern. Mr Walker made it clear to us that things around, for instance, legal action that could be taken against this government by a company, a large offshore company, those things are in current trade agreements. And in fact, just look back in Dunedin's history, I can name at least two businesses in Dunedin that have been put out of business by governments changing the rules. One was Bonner Industries, when the Australian appliance industry lobbied the Australian government to introduce a duty on chest freezers coming from... government to introduce a duty on chest freezers coming from New Zealand, which they did, it destroyed Bonheur Industries. The second was our local distillery, where the same thing I think was Indonesia. Indonesian government, the distillery was producing a lot of product for Indonesia, they introduced a rule that they would start their own distilleries and would not allow alcohol from New Zealand. I'm not sure of the facts around just what they did, but that resulted in some 80,000 carats of whisky which were in the bond store based on the growing sales because of the aging time needed, that when that business ceased, it was the death knell, the start of the death knell for that distillery. So I think it's only appropriate that there is opportunities in these trade agreements to make sure that our businesses are protected from overseas countries who are allowing us to export goods to them, to stop it overnight and having a very significant impact on our economy. Just imagine what would happen if one of Fonterra's largest customers decided to put a very high duty rate on our dairy products. Would we want to take some form of redress? Yes, we would. So I think, while I'm not going to die on a ditch over this, and I accept that the point's under Point One, do not say, do not sign a TPPA agreement. What I'm worried about is that we are endorsing something where, in some cases, we have heard directly that these things are not what is in the TPPA.
Councillor Bezette.
Thank you. I'm like councillor Thompson, I certainly haven't been lying in bed worrying about this in the last few nights. And I think when I look back at the vote that we had when Wise Response came to us some time ago with a submission to go to government, the vote, that day I think had some members who had withdrawn from voting, had they been able to, we would have lost that vote that day. And to answer councillor McTavish's question about which of these recommendations I wouldn't support, look, I would support them all. I think they're great. All in character, the whole, they are casual recommendations, and at the risk of sounding frivolous, I don't see why we shouldn't include a cure for cancer, because that's what they're looking for. The recommendations are taking everything into consideration to the extent that they're almost meaningless. My real objection is that we've been asked to act on behalf of a group of individuals or, in the case of Wise Response, to lobby on their behalf. And I don't believe that's the role of local government at all. On page 24.3, the role of local government spells out quite clearly, in my view, our role, and it's not to advocate on behalf of lobby groups to the government. And so I am against Option Three, obviously, sorry, Option One, I will be supporting Option Three. If those who are opposed to Option Three were of mind to support it, you will still, and so will every other group, whether individuals or groups that want to lobby the government, will still have the opportunity to do that. This is not denying individuals' right to go to government at any time, and they can do that through your local member of parliament, and you can put your case to government through that particular resource. Not ask Dunedin City Council to act as the conduit for a lobby group. So I will be supporting the recommendation of Option Three, and I'll ask those of you to consider for a moment who do support Option One, that you will have an opportunity at some stage, many opportunities as a matter of fact, before this issue is resolved, to put your case.
Councillor Wilson.
I spoke at the Wise Response climate change submission on the basis that I think we get too hung up, and especially six weeks out or five weeks out from election, about government and who's it's addressed to. I actually think if one wanted to read this endorsement as part of Option One, as an endorsement of the servants of the government who are negotiating this and asking them to carry on doing the good work that they are doing. I'm not quite sure where the politics come into this, maybe I'm just being completely naive, but isn't this what everyone would want? Whether we should be doing it as a council, on the other hand, it seems to be an issue that certainly under the Local Government Act, other councils believe they've got an amendment to vote on, and numerous councils have already voted on it with substantially greater populations than ourselves. So I don't have a problem that we do vote on it. And I do wonder, the people who've taken sides here, what they would do if it was the other, if it was the Green Party that were deciding to negotiate this at the moment, and whether we'd have faith in the process. I am concerned about the, and I take on point councillor Hawkins, concerns about 12 and whether we should be looking at the Tasman district council for, whichever way we vote, I would really want L to be in there, whether it be Option, well, except for in Option Three, you're not doing a submission. But I am really concerned that this may not come, as councillor Bezette's just suggested is going to happen. We don't know for any certainty that this is going to come up for a public submission process at government, and that is the area that I do feel most concerned about. But I don't see anything wrong with the resolution proposed. It is only a resolution that's encouraging, it's not saying you have to. And I'm not quite sure why we wouldn't want all of those things to be endorsed by our council.
I was somewhat reassured, like others here have said, by the chief negotiator's comments this morning, and particularly around the issue of labour and employment and his reference to the International Labour Organisation conditions, that they would not be up for negotiation by New Zealand and they would hold to those conditions. But I'm also aware that we're only one vote in 12, and I took it from what he said, that consensus was required for any deal to be made and that New Zealand could veto if the other 11 could veto the thing. So I think that the central government does deserve to hear the voice of local government on this issue and that I would be supporting Option One with an amendment, I think as already suggested, to incorporate the Tasman district approach to it and to remove the Aucklandisms that are present.
Well, I heard the submissions today, and we've had them in the past, and I respect those submissions and I respect their concerns. I also heard from the chief negotiator today, David Walker, and I have to say that I was quite reassured by what he told us. And I was even more reassured by the fact that he made it clear at the beginning that anything that was told to us, we were able to discuss here in public. So that's why I support Option One, because it's asking for the very measures that our chief negotiator has assured us are in place. So what can be wrong with that? Are we saying, yes, the government gives us these assurances, but we dare not raise our heads and ask for them? We, all these say, I don't think they say, I just think they're laying down a few principles which the chief negotiators has assured us are being followed. That's why I can't support Option Three, if we're going to be honest and we're going to be consistent, in accepting the assurances of the chief negotiator, then Option One is the only way that I think I can honestly go. Councillor Wiley, you write a reply.
Thank you, your worship. I think the first thing we have to remember is that negotiators are still negotiating, and that's the key element, and we're not going to solve those issues here in this room. And they are global issues. When you start looking at newspapers around the world, you'll see the Canadians are having the same discussions we're having, the Australians are having the same discussions, and through the whole world of countries, these discussions are taking place. Councillor Pete, the good news is, under TPPA, if it does go through based on, there will be lands in the US. You know, that's a big plus. And a lot of countries will prosper. The big thing is, everybody seems to think the Americans are going to get everything and everybody else is going to lose. And I find that very hard to swallow, and I don't think that any negotiator will make that happen. The other thing that really disturbs me is a lot of the discussion that's brought forward to this table and we've listened to has come from WikiLeaks. Now, I'm sorry, I want some more factual information that comes from WikiLeaks. Their last information was released in November 2013. I think there's been a lot more negotiation going on since then. So I think we should let negotiations run its course. I'd also want to base my decision on the information that's released by the government, because they are the ones that are doing the negotiating. And I don't believe any government would sell this country.
Only for 30 years.
The key thing is, we as individuals can all make our feelings known to government, and you all have the right to do that. So if you just choose to do that, go ahead, it's all yours. The key aspect that I want to finish on is under Option One, the key, the first point disadvantage was the council would be relying on limited information on the potential implications of the TPPA on Dunedin. That's the first disadvantage point. What's the advantage under Option Three? Leaves open the opportunity for a resolution at a later stage if council wishes to examine the TPPA in more detail. Thank you.
Okay. I am going to put it, and given the obvious division on the table, I'm going to call for a division.
Very good, very good.
Aye.
Councillor Bezette.
Aye.
Councillor Hall.
Aye.
Aye. Councillor Hawkins.
No.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Councillor McTavish.
No.
Councillor Noon.
Aye.
Councillor Pete.
No.
Councillor Staines.
Aye.
Councillor Thompson.
Aye.
Councillor Vandevos.
Aye.
Councillor Wiley.
Aye.
Councillor Wilson.
No.
Sorry, that was no.
No.
And Mia Carr.
No.
She's a draw. It's a good number. It's like, you know. I'm going to pass out. Drop me the rack. So I call upon somebody if they wish to...
Richard.
You, subsequent to your motion.
Look, I don't want to, I've indicated that I'm happy, rather than go through and process a formal amendment if Tasman...
I've sent through whatever.
Have you? Well, then I'm happy for that amendment to be included. I think I've said what I wanted to say earlier, so that's any point.
So can you just clarify what the amendment, sorry, I sent it through to, so...
Can you talk us through it?
What?
Is it removing XII or not?
Removing 12 and replacing it with the Tasman...
Yeah, that's correct.
And then the Tasman replacement clauses instead of 12.
So the difference between what is here on attachment one and what is on the board is largely the text of XII.
Yeah, and just a few orphanisms that councillor Pui referred to then deleted.
So...
The addition of the two from Tasman at the bottom.
Could you just... Okay, so this is what you're moving councillor Thompson? And seconded councillor Hawkins? Can I suggest that any speakers speak to new material? Everyone on both sides has spoken comprehensively and might even say eloquently on both sides, but there's no need to repeat all that, so can I suggest that anyone who wants to speak speaks to the...
I move that the motion be put.
You move that the motion be put?
Can we do it in parts?
That's up to the mover and secondor. Councillor Wilson's asking if it can be moved in part.
Is there a specific? There's a specific...
I'm not allowed to talk to him because he's moved a motion.
I'm happy to second councillor Benton Pope's motion that it be put.
Right. So I think procedurally I have to put that motion. So the motion is that the substantive motion will be put. All those in favour, please say aye.
Can I, sorry.
Against?
No.
I was just going to suggest to have a division, but I was too slow.
No, no, can I have a show of hands, those who support the motion being put immediately as per councillor Benton Pope's motion, put their hands up, please.
What do we, what do we...
Now, this is a procedural, this is a procedural motion, as to whether to put the substantive motion immediately. So those who support putting the substantive motion, I have to have them one at a time, those who support the substantive motion being put immediately, please raise their hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Those against? One, two, three, four, five, six. I will, in the interests of clarification, that allows, because it was a draw, and I, because I think that there's some virtue in the discussion of the changes, the amendments, rather than bolting straight into it. So councillor Wilson.
I'm in favour of L. I think in the spirit of what I said earlier about this being an affirmation of the process going forward, my concern with is with M, because it actually suggests that there isn't a whole lot of work happening, understanding that cost benefit already. Could you scroll up, please, Pam? So M makes verification conditional upon a full social, environmental and economic impact assessment. And I, the tone of that is quite different from every other part of that motion, which suggests that it hasn't happened before it's going to be put to us. And that is why I want to change the tone of that or not include it, because I think if it was referred to a parliamentary committee process, that would require government to put the papers forward that have the rationale behind it, and that that should in itself meet that criteria suggested in M. That's why I want to keep it consistent with the style of it already, and that's why I wouldn't, I would rather vote only for L and not for M.
Okay, so with the leave of the mover and secondor, I'm happy to put this in two parts, that is, everything down to L and then M separately. Is that, is that what you're, just to clarify, councillor Wilson, that's what you're suggesting? So the mover and secondor, you're happy with that?
I'm happy for it. I'm happy for it, M to be taken as separate.
Right.
Oh, just that they perhaps could be renumbered as 12 and 13 rather than L and M.
I'm happy to call them whatever. Call them as long as they're treated.
This is where you're going to talk English.
Right. Is there any further discussion on the changes?
That's amazing.
Okay, councillor Bezette.
Well, I just want to speak against the whole lot.
Well, what I'm asking is that you restrict yourself to comment on the changes, because we've already had comprehensive discussion of all of the rest of it.
Oh, well, as may be. I just want to say that I think this is a significant precedent. This is the first time in whatever I can recall of being on council that the council has succumbed to a political lobby group, and I think that it sets a very, very bad example for the future. We will have endless groups coming along to lobby this council on their behalf and making protests to the government, and I think it's a very bad decision.
Can I point out that, I don't think it is the first time that council has listened to a group... to a group with a specific cause or concern, indeed...
I didn't say that.
Well...
I didn't say, listen, I said succumb.
Well...
Big difference.
The point is, some time ago, a group came to us with concerns about fracking, and the council took the concerns to the Commissioner for the Environment, or to the government, with regard to the Commissioner for the Environment. So whether we agree with that or not, we listened, and if you like, we succumbed. Um, councillor Thompson, you move this, I'll give you...
Just in brief, sometime last century, Mr Mayor, this council succumbed to the lobby of the nuclear-free lobby groups. In fact, the city demonstrated a degree of leadership that was subsequently followed up by a central government. And actually, I recall councillor Bezette was at the table then too, and I'm sure he recalls how he voted at the time.
As I said, I can't report.
Are there any further speakers with something you to say? All right, I am going to put this...
I was going to have a...
Oh, you're sorry, you were right.
I, I wish to say that I don't believe I've succumbed to anything. What I have done is made a decision purely and simply on behalf of my own brain, having listened to the views of a range of people, including my colleagues sitting around the table. So, you know, if that's succumbing, then we've, we all do it on a regular basis, and I make no apologies whatsoever for it.
I am going to put the...
Can I suggest a division? Your worship to make this as painless as possible?
Yes, I'm going to do it by way of division, and I'm going to do it down to, um, twelve...
Let's not lobby now.
In the first instance, so, um, the division is down to everything but thirteen.
Councillor Benson-Pope? Councillor Bezette?
No.
Councillor Hall?
No.
Councillor Hawkins?
Aye.
Councillor Lord?
No.
Councillor McTavish?
Aye.
Councillor Noon?
No.
Councillor Pete?
Aye.
Councillor Staines?
No.
Councillor Thompson?
Aye.
Councillor Vandevos?
abstaining with a reason that we can't know what it is we're actually voting on.
Councillor Wiley?
No.
Councillor Wilson?
Yes.
Mia Carl?
Aye.
Carried seven six with one abstention.
Thank you, councillor Vandevos. Right, and now the second, the number thirteen, um, is the, do you want, wish to, anyone wish to speak to that particularly? Now, unless there's... We'll just put that by way of a normal vote, I think. All those in favour, please say aye. Against?
No.
It's lost. Thank you. That concludes that particular... Now, we'll move on to the, um, item twenty-five, the digital office funding request, and we have some representatives from a number of affiliated organisations. Mr Hill, Mr Christie, and Mr Anderson, if you'd like to come up. Welcome, gentlemen. Um, is there anything you would like to lead off with, before I throw it open for questions?
I just, if I could just put things in context a wee bit, just, um, we've got an economic development strategy, which is six partners, as we all know, and a budget which has already been passed by council to basically move that, move that economic development strategy forward. The Digital Community Trust came to the Groddin Eden partnership, that's that partnership, six organisations, with a request for funding for a, for a digital, basically coordinator, who would enact a number of, number of projects. The body itself, the Groddin Eden partnership, have approved this with the okay from the full council. Now, this is through the delegations, which also includes the report. So it's really about getting the okay through that delegated responsibility to fund, to fund the coordinator for the Digital Community Trust to carry out these projects. That is it in context. Councillor Calvert has sent a number of questions through, which I emailed through the answers this morning.
Thank you. Right, questions, councillors, councillor Vandevos?
I haven't had the benefit of seeing your email, Des, responding, and I'm not sure what councillor Calvert's questions were, but my question is that, given that we usually require to see proper books and accounts for any trust organisation, um, before we actually send any money their way, and, and that this had to be brought up before, why is it that we are now contemplating effectively a sixty-five thousand dollar grant, um, to a Digital Community Trust that we haven't seen the normal paperwork for?
Hope you can hear me. Um, yeah, good question. Last time we came to the city, we were asked that question, so we set the, uh, the process in motion, and then as a trust board, we decided it would be far better to align our financial year with the city council year, so we told the accountants to put the original request on hold and extend that to be a fifteen month period, ending June, same as the city council. So Markham's, Clark Prowe have had that process underway, they have not yet, although they were hoping to try and get those accounts out today, because that was a question raised. But it will be, um, fairness at the moment, we've changed to a fifteen month time period to line up with the city for that reason that was raised last time. This question that came from Hillary on Friday, I think, didn't give us enough time to get to Clark Prowe to get those accounts to you today, but I can assure you that they will be presented in an audited state to the city.
So, sorry, how, how long would it take before they...
We were hopeful, we were hopeful they would be there today, and I got an email from the accountant before I left saying, you're working the, the best to try and get them out now, but we haven't got them for you to read or to, certainly not in an audited state.
So would it adversely affect the Digital Community Trust if we were to simply defer this digital office funding request to the next council meeting when we did have the normal trust accounts to view? Would, would you have any objection to us basically just letting this lie on the table to the next council meeting when we could have that normal information?
Through the chair, I think we've got a time factor here. We're trying to deliver the economic development strategy. Everyone here wants to know how it, how things are going. Already, I've had New Zealand Trade and Enterprise say to me, their managers, only last week, they said to me, oh, you should be doing what we're doing in Wongarei. We had delivery of a digital journeys programme. And I looked at them and I smiled, and I says, do you know where that digital journeys come from? Looked back at me, oh, that's right, it was developed through the digital office here. We've already had two lots, two lots of businesses go through it, and the thing that really, really worries me is a number of things that get put on hold. We need to move with the strategy. It is, it is quite, it is quite, um, it's quite important. In an effort, in an effort to try and align their budgets with ours, it's put, it's put them back, basically digital office, digital community trust rather. So I would say it's important also to, to realise that this is Digital Community Trust carrying out a number of these, a number of these projects. This is not Giga Down. Giga Down is a separate project which finishes in November.
One option, if you have a concern about the audited accounts, that might be an option available to you, rather than waiting till council on the twenty-second of September, would be to approve the grants subject to the CFO seeing the audited accounts sometime in the next few days and agreeing that he's comfortable with them. I just put it out on the table for your consideration.
Well, we're not, that's, that's, that's an option, for someone to potentially move. We're still in questions, so any further questions? Councillor McTavish?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Councillor Hawkins, I have your name.
Thank you, worship. Just for clarity, given that the question about the accounts had been raised previously, you knew that they were needed to be presented, but you didn't ask for them until they were requested subsequently this past Friday?
What occurred was the accounts for the previous year, they were given to us to the end of, um, two thousand and thirteen, the end of the financial thing, it was March thirty-first. In between times, we've had discussions with, with the Digital Community Trust about aligning their process with council's financial year. There were questions put to us by councillor Calvert, and I think it was Friday or Thursday, I'm just off the top of my head, I can't remember, but at that stage, there'd been no, no one wanted, no one wanted those particular accounts before then. But we're in the process, as Mr Hills has said, is trying to get hold of them.
And just one other question about the service level agreement. Sorry, apologies, I'm a little unclear as to how the chain of command works here. So we may or may not approve funding that will then not be released until this service level agreement has been signed off, but will that service level agreement come back to us for sign off, or is that something delegated to the Groddin Eden partnership?
Yeah, so your worship, the Groddin Eden partnership thought that the best way to facilitate this was to do it by way of a service level agreement, because it's not a grant, uh, so we would be expecting that that service level agreement will outline what's going to be delivered, and what funding is tagged to that, uh, with all the KPIs that, um, that Groddin Eden partnership are requesting to be put in place.
So we won't see it before it gets signed off and the money gets released? The only decision we have is to release the money before we see what that would look like?
It's correct. Can I just ask something here, because there seems to be an inference, and going back to the need for the accounts, there seems to have been an inference taken, that the digital trust is being treated, or has been treated, in a way different from any other organisation. And I want to clarify whether that's the case. In terms of requirement of accounts, I want to clarify whether that's the case or not, because we regularly ask for accounts from all sorts of organisations that we fund, and I, and the, as I say, the inference seems to have been taken in some quarters, that we have been remiss and not asked for it, and they've been remiss and not giving it, and they've been slack, and it's been slow. I want to know whether the digital trust has been treated any differently from any...
As far as I'm aware, it's been treated no differently. We want the accounts, and we'll get the accounts.
Right, councillor McTavish?
Um, thank you for the clarifications that were sent through this morning, firstly. Secondly, um, I guess the key issue that came up when we were reading this paper is just that, um, the digital office effectively is going to have two mandates or two requirements on it. The first is deliver on the digital strategy, and the second will be to deliver on the economic development strategy. And if I, if I recall the trust constitution correctly, and I haven't had time to look it up, but it is specifically directed at implementing the digital strategy. Peter is nodding, so my recollection is correct. So, um, I guess I'm just struggling to understand, or I'm keen to understand, how the Groddin Eden partnership will see, um, the managing of those two different strategies and, and the demands on the trust in that regard. My sense is that it will require someone at the Groddin Eden partnership have a very clear understanding of the digital strategy, because that is, in the first instance, what the trust is going to be delivering on. And that has got a multitude of elements, some of which are economic development. So, sorry, that's a long question, but I'm, I'm keen to understand how, what the thinking is around how to manage that.
The digital office is charged with delivering the, the strategy as set, set out early, but it has also taken on other community projects as well as that, so its ability to be a bit wider than just the, the Dunedin city strategy is there. Obviously, one of the tasks that we took on was the Atago wide strategy, as well as another, you know, a number of other initiatives, whether it be computers in homes or the digital journeys, which is dealing with a commercial entity. So, so there's a variety of projects underway, and it is a case of most, all of those organisations are demanding that their outcomes are met within the funding that they've created. So we have to be quite clear about, A, accounting for that, and B, also delivering on those KPIs and those criterias that have been set out. And they are quite diverse, so the answer is yes, it is a bit complex. Common ground is they're all digital.
Sorry, can I stand, your worship, if you look on page twenty-five-five, the Groddin Eden partnership was given a paper prepared by the digital office outlining what they thought would line up to the economic development objectives that we have under that partnership. So we would see that being incorporated in a final service level agreement, which would clearly spell out what our expectations would be around economic development initiatives versus their other work.
Yeah, that, that's helpful, and I guess, um, maybe this is debate, sorry.
Okay. Any further questions? Councillor Bezette?
Well, just to, um, clarify the issue with regards to service level agreement, I see that the, um, that the Digital Community Trust would look at the service level agreement and sign that off. Can that go to councillor Lord at the same time?
I don't see why not. It's, um, it's a public document, and can be sent on to councillors as well.
Yeah, I mean, that, to me, seems to be the only, well, there might be other, other something blocks to it, but to me, that's one that council sent, because I know that's one that councillor Calvert was concerned about as well. But that, that was, if it was allowed to councillor Lord, then that seems to me a way of negating their concerns.
Your worship, I was just going to add to that, that the Groddin, Groddin Eden partnership is representative of a number of stakeholders, as you're fully aware. Each of those has a representative, and I would expect that those representatives have the right to be able to communicate with, within their own organisation. So your representative presumably has the freedom to be able to undertake that discussion with council, as the other stakeholders naturally would. Can I just clarify there, councillor Bezette, whether you're asking whether that needs to come back to council for approval? Because as I understand it, the Groddin Eden partnership has been delegated the authority to okay the service level agreement. That's been delegated from council. So I think you're quite right to say that the, and John has confirmed it, that the service level agreement can be, come back to council, but it's not coming back to council for approval, because we've delegated the authority to make that decision to the Groddin Eden partnership. Is that a reason?
I'm, I'm very, I'm personally very happy, I'm very happy to move the way we nature.
Well, I'm just clarifying. Um, so you're happy to move? So it's moved, Bezette? Seconded, Lord? Any discussion? Now, we're in, councillor Vandevos?
I, I've been looking for a reason to rush this, because I feel rushed. We, we've got no accounts for this year, and we've been given a reason for it, but we still have no accounts, and, um, I would have questions about whatever accounts that would be, I'm sure. We have no service level agreement, uh, that's going to be delegated, but again, despite it being delegated, that would help us inform whether or not we actually felt that this was sixty-five thousand dollars of ratepayers' money. was $65,000 of ratepayers' money to be well spent. We've got no accounts, we've got no service level agreement, and other than Mr Adinson's claim that we need to move with the strategy, we've got no urgency here that I can see either. I've spoken already, so I'm hoping that someone else will actually, who hasn't spoken, will actually just say that, look, let's leave this lie on the table to the 22nd of September, by then we will have the accounts to look at, we will have the service level agreement, and we can make an informed decision. I can't vote for it as it is, because there's nothing here that gives me confidence to fund a full-time coordinator manager, when, yeah, there's just not enough information. And it's not that we haven't asked for this information, it just hasn't come here. The final straw, I think, is that Mr Adinson has says, has said that this has resulted because of aligning a digital community trust process with ours. Our process is to see the accounts, see the service level agreement, and then fund.
Can I correct, can I correct you there councillor? He didn't say aligning process, it was aligning the financial year for the accounts.
With respect, your worship, I wrote it down as he said it, and it was aligning digital community trust process with...
Councillor, I don't care what you wrote down, what was meant was that we're aligning the financial period.
Are you saying that something different was meant, other than what was written down?
I don't know what you wrote down, I'm not arguing...
I wrote down what he said.
I'm not arguing about it, I'm telling you what was meant. Any other speakers? councillor Wylie?
Thank you, your worship. I will be supporting this, because this is where the growth of jobs are, we need to make sure that the digital office is supported to grow Dunedin and really help all parts of the community. And when you look at what the, what the digital office has done to date, you know, you have to applaud the work they continually do, and I think supporting them is the only way forward. Thank you.
councillor McTavish?
Your worship, I, I hear that there are some concerns about process, and I think one of the things that we do need to acknowledge is that this is a new process for Groton Ead and Partnership, and that I think this is the first one that's come back to us for sign off, and that there are some issues that we need, and we just need to ensure that we are in good communication about those and improving those. And I think that the chief executive suggestion, she's made this suggestion around SLA and other things coming back to us, which I think might help work through those. The concern that I have is around the digital, our partnership with the digital trust, the city's partnership with the digital trust, we have seen at its core is about economic development, and I, I get that, and I think that that's totally appropriate. There is work that the digital trust has done in the past, in which I really hope it will continue to do, which is much more than simply economic development. It is community development, it is building on a whole range of different community-based initiatives, and I would hate for that to be lost. That is core to the, the vision that was outlined in the digital strategy as it was initially written, and when the trust was set up, that's what they were asked to, to deliver on. So what I'm, and, and I would have liked to see the SLA for the same reason, because I, I, what I'm concerned about is that we don't lose that focus and that drive when we put an economic development spin on it. And I see Peter nodding, so I'm, I'm comfortable that there will be consideration of that. But certainly, that's what I'll be looking for when the SLA comes through, and I, I hope that that is what the Groton Ead and Partnership will be focusing on as well. So I look forward to seeing that.
councillor Hawkins?
Thank you. I really struggle with this, because I have questions about how we go about funding these kinds of initiatives, and that comes out of a partnership arrangement around economic development that a previous council had set up, and I would have loved to have been part of those conversations had we had that opportunity. But I, for all the strategic reasons that councillor McTavish outlined, in combination with the process, which is that the Groton Ead and Partnership were targeted, who are tasked with looking after the economic development strategy, they are the ones who are now tasked with developing the service level agreement for the digital office, who have a far broader remit, or we hope have a far broader remit than, than economic development. As great as it is to see my colleague councillor Wiley coming on board Low Carbon Industries as the way for the future of Dunedin's economy, but I do have some sympathy for councillor Van de Bees's comments, that without knowing what it is that we're funding, and without seeing the accounts for who we are giving that money to, I find it very hard to support writing that cheque and then seeing the SLA later in whatever form that takes. I'm hoping that that work is well underway and to see what that would look like. I would have certainly have preferred to see it even in a draft form, to be able to inform a decision as to what it is that we're signing away $65,000 on in a time when we don't have a whole lot of money to spare. And it does concern me that those sorts of strategic directions are taken out of, hands off of those who are writing the cheques and put into a broader group, however well-meaning, where we are just one vote of many. So I can't, I can't support this, but would gladly support a subsequent motion to defer that to a point where we had that kind of information available to us to make that decision, be it at the next council meeting or otherwise.
The speakers. Okay, before coming back to councillor Bezette, I will be supporting this. I note, just picking up on a few issues, I note that councillor McTavish referred to some of the original objectives, the digital strategy, and they, they were far wider than simply economic and simply financial. There is absolutely no doubt about that. But unfortunately, as time went on, we almost challenged the digital people, whomever they were, that if they couldn't justify it almost only in financial and economic terms, then they weren't really worth their salt, and they weren't really, it wasn't really worth. I think we've done them a disservice, and we've done our community a disservice in that regard, and I think we've done the original vision a bit of a disservice. Because in chipping away, and I think to some extent unjustifiably, at the, at the digital trust and the digital office, we have, we've made it more difficult for them in the long run. I, as I say, I support this, I would invite, however, particularly councillor Van de Bees, to whom the offer was made by the chief, that if the council was of the view that the provision be included, that if the accounts come back to the CFO, and that this approval be on the condition that the CFO check that those audited accounts, they come in the next couple of weeks, and if the mover and seconder, I'd invite the mover and seconder to, to, you know, amend that in, it's an other level of reassurance for those that are a bit, so if you're, you're happy with that, are you happy councillor Wylie?
Thank you. Satisfactory to the CFO's standard.
That's fine, we'll, we'll, we know what that means. Okay, councillor Bezette, you're right on the floor.
Look, just very quickly, you know, the economic development unit was granted funds to our annual plan, it wasn't at that time, I don't identify absolutely where those funds were going to be spent, and this is possibly one of the first requests for some funds, and I believe that it will happen again. I'm really confident in the Groton Ead and Partnership board, I think, if you think about for a moment, the make-up of that board, the membership of that board, and the people who they represent, they're a very credible group, and I have, I have confidence that they wouldn't be coming to us seeking funds if there wasn't a, for a genuine project that would help the, the digital office and the Dunedin Groton Partnership. So the checks and balances are put in place, they'll come back with a, with a service level agreement that we can look at, the resolution that the mayor has added to it also gives us a bit of confidence that they're on the right track, so I would, you support it.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Against?
No. Record it, please.
It's carried. I'm, I'm happy to have a show of hands, if, if that makes people more confident, I'm pretty, I'm confident it was carried, but, and councillor Van de Bees wants his vote recorded against. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We're on to item 26, temporary road closure of, for an event, this is the Targa Rally, North Road, Mount Cabal Road, Jordan's King Memorial Drive and High Cliff Road.
Lovely, meaning the fossil fuels that's going to use.
Is there anything you would like to, to, to questions?
The only thing is really that we've, there's been objections from the community boards that we've consulted.
No.
No.
So questions, councillors? councillor Wilson?
Just wondering, is the process that's undertaken by Targa any different from, say, cycling events, or which close the roads off occasionally for the Masters Games or anything like that?
Yes, there is a slight change in the process that we're following this time with a new event. When the committee delegations were reviewed recently, we've obtained some legal advice, and back then, we used to go to the road closures subcommittee. That subcommittee no longer has the same delegated authorities, so the, the only other committee, or sorry, the only other meeting that can approve it is the full council.
So, but the process for the organisers of an event is no different from a cycle race as it is a car race or any other race, if the road's going to be closed?
Yes, so for road closures for events, we are looking at bringing those to council for a decision at this stage, and we'll be working with the organisers of the event for that.
Yeah, I think the point is, John, the question that councillor Wilson is asking is if, if Targa were a cycle race, they would have to follow the same procedures as if...
That's correct.
Thank you. Any further questions? councillor McTavish?
Yeah, well, I, I also, it's just a matter of process, but I was surprised that they hadn't first gone through the community boards and then gone out to the residents, because the community boards can often assist with that process, and I'm wondering whether we give information to event organisers, saying, please go to the community boards first, or is it, is it simply that they don't know that they exist? Why is it that that wasn't done?
Yes, they were advised to approach the community board first, they would have swept things over. At the end of the day, it is up to the event organiser as to whether they do approach the community board first or the residents first.
Is there any way that we can make it compulsory to approach the community boards first?
The council doesn't generally get involved in the organising of the event, we can only provide them with the best advice, and it's up to the organiser to then follow that advice. So no, we can't make that compulsory.
So there is no legal way that we can make that compulsory?
councillor Newn?
Thank you, your worship. My question's just around maintenance, for example, if, if the car rally, someone runs off the road, takes out a signpost or whatever, have we got all that covered in terms of the agreement with the rally organisers?
That's correct. The rally organisers have got insurance, and we've dealt with these organisers in the past, so there's never really been a problem with any maintenance not repaired.
councillor Wylie?
With, with your maintenance, if there is damage, do they fix it immediately?
Yes, the, the first step is to make it safe, that is done immediately, we then work with them to make sure the road's repaired and suitable standard, and we do do a check of the road before the event, so that we have a good record of what condition it's in before the event.
Is, is there door locking on the residents? Is that a compulsory thing, or?
It's not compulsory, but we do advise them to take every practicable measure to make sure that there's no objection to the event, that they do consult adequately with the people affected, and to minimise any objections to the decision.
Well, in my case, it wasn't until Thursday that I got this bit of paper that I knew where it was actually starting, and it's starting right at my front door. Then here, a drop-off in my tractor that was parked on the side of the road, on my private property, so I went out the tractor and here's their notice in there. I don't think that is acceptable. I've got three kilometres of boundary on that road, and the whole three kilometres are the only access to my property, and the whole three kilometres are closed off. Now, there's a simple system for this, and I don't know whether the council should enforce it or not, but if you go on the council website, you can pick up all the owners, identify everybody on that road, contact them on your rate demand, just a matter of pushing the button, and it tells you where to contact the person. Now, this is, it's starting right outside my front door of my house, and they have contacted me.
Any further questions? move, is there a second, councillor Bezette? councillor Newn, would you like to speak to it?
councillor Bezette? You know, I, I think this is potentially a very good event for City, and, you know, while I accept that there are some people going to be inconvenienced, you know, nothing would happen if you, if you listen to, everybody feels opposed to, to, to something, and I, as I say, I accept that they may be inconvenienced, but I think the event really is, is important enough to, to mitigate those concerns that they have. So my, I'm very happy with it.
councillor McTavish?
Just briefly, your worship, my issue is more one of process, and I'm concerned that we perhaps don't have the optimal, 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 optimal process around this, and I'm wondering whether perhaps the chair of ISCOM could, in the first instance anyway, just work with staff to draft a short outline of what exactly the process is, which we follow around road stopping, and so that we're all familiar with it, and we're informed to make a decision about whether or not we do have the right one in place.
councillor Wylie?
Thank you, your worship. I'm fully in support of this, I think, you know, having a letter from Larnock Cars endorsing it, and having an impact on their business on that day, I think is a, a big baton they put on, and what it's going to do for the peninsula. I also understand that there's going to be parts of the community out there that are going to use it as a fundraiser, and I think that's a big plus. And I also think having doc staff having formally given feedback that there to be a low risk is also a big plus. And I also make note that the, somewhere up on Larnock, that one of the local docs even managed to have a nip at the delivery person, so obviously something was done.
Any further discussion?
Can I just make a final point?
Yeah.
It'd be just good, the, the issues that have been raised by councillors, that if staff just take it on board, so that we can, you know, learn from each, each event, and maybe help to streamline it and make it better for all.
All right. I'm going to put, these are the recommendations on page 26.1, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carry. Thank you. Now, item 27, electoral system for future local authority elections. So it's been moved, Bezette seconded, McTavish for a. Does anybody have any questions from the, from the well-armed Ms Graham, the governance officer? It's been moved and secreted, so discussion, or do you have a question councillor Van?
I was just wondering if there was a mood to look at a return to the first past-the-post system, can you let us know what kind of process would be involved to actually get us there?
This is it.
It's been there for a while now.
This is it, this is the process.
Okay. Good to see it. All right.
Sorry, I mentioned to us worship earlier, I was just rereading the report this morning and realised that it didn't actually make clear, if you did wish to move back to first past-the-post, you may pass a resolution to do that, but it should be for the next two elections, not like the poll, but you can revisit that decision. but it should be for the next two elections, not like the poll, but you can revisit that decision at the end of the next election as well, after the next election as well. But the, your question councillor Vandervis, if you wish to change back to first past the post, you can do through this process, but we, as the report says, you also actually have to make the public resolution of what the council decide, sorry, the public notice of what the council decides. So, if you do decide to move back to first past the post, people have the option to get up a petition against that. Alternatively, if you decide to retain STV, we still have to put that decision on a public notice and people have the option to get the requisite number of signatures to move to FPP if they wish to do that.
Okay, so it's been councillor Wilson and councillor Hall.
There's actually a question, I think, Ms Graham, have we heard from ORC what they are doing yet? I thought, I saw that they were considering it, they were considering STV, but I can't recall seeing what they've decided. You just turn your mic off, Ms Graham.
Better?
Yeah.
Sorry. I've not heard. Pam, have you heard?
Not officially, no.
Unofficially? We can't be unofficial.
Okay, councillor Hawkins?
My question is of clarification whether A or B, A or B doesn't preclude D. So, regardless of what we decide, it can still be D.
Clarification, D, we can't have A and D because D says makes no decision.
Yeah, sorry, but the second half of D.
Okay, any further speakers? Councillor Van, councillor Van Dees?
As someone who was originally a great fan of STV and I'd seen what it had done in Ireland, seen it being used in various other countries around the world and I thought, great, we've got a better voting system, let's go for it. And I, with all the best intentions, got right in behind it many, many years ago, now I won't bore you with the details, until the 2007 election in which I got dumped by, by four votes on iteration number nine out of sixteen, prior to which I was second polling candidate only behind Mr Walls and I went from hero to zero in one iteration. And I thought, my goodness, I've got to go and see what this is all about, so I started an email train, a rather long train with a Mr Warwick Lamp who runs Elections NZ. And a number of things came out of this and I just, I really think, if you bear with me for five minutes, so it's worth going through what I discovered, because it took me four more. It took me about, it took me a couple of years to get this info out of Mr Warwick Lamp. He was not very forthcoming to begin with and said that, no, I couldn't see the original data and no, I couldn't have this and I couldn't have that, but in the end he gave me the original data, but it was all coded and he wouldn't give me the codes and finally I got the codes and figured out what had actually happened in this election. Turns out that we don't have an STV system here. What we have is a modified STV system. The STV system that I was so keen on, that seemed to do all the clever computer trickery to, to rank people and, and get one result, worked fine when you were going for one result, but when you wanted to get twelve councillors, what they did was they got the existing STV programme and they got a couple of computer boffins from the Department of Internal Affairs to rejig the iteration system so that it would then rank subsequent candidates. The problem was that these two boffins from the Department of Internal Affairs were quite clever computer types and it's since been poached and moved on and nobody left at the Department of Internal Affairs or Mr Warwick Lamp himself could actually say how the system worked or why the cutoff points where they did these iterations were chosen. All that he could assure me was that the system worked consistently and every time they have an election, they run the system through imaginary computer programmes to see that it works consistently. And I accept that it works consistently. What I don't accept is that this modified system works in a representative fashion. And the reason for that is that if you look at what happens with an STV system, you're at the mercy of a computer programme that nobody in the Department of Internal Affairs actually knows anymore. Two boffins that designed it, that wrote the programme have actually moved on. All they do is they get an accounting firm, and I don't know who it was last time, to actually run the programme and just check that it's still working consistently. But I don't believe it works representatively anymore. Now, when I brought this up and a few other people brought it up back a few years ago now, it was stated that what they would do was they would run a first past the post version of the election with those same votes. And they came to the conclusion that, well, actually, under first past the post, you would have got exactly the same result. And that was supposed to pacify me. It didn't. If a first past the post result, which is far more transparent, far more easy for everybody to figure out, not relying on a computer programme that's got like ten billion pieces of information that nobody knows anymore, if a first past the post system gives you the same result and is much more transparent, why don't we actually go back to a first past the post system? Because the STV system throws up all sorts of irregularities potentially that that Ginty knows all about. And my argument for having another look at this is that the first past the post system is transparent. It's not ideal, but none of them are. That what we have is actually not an STV system, it's a modified STV and it's seriously not understood by the people that are actually producing it. There is no guarantee that it's representative and it throws up some really odd results. Now, if we want an electoral system that is basically kind of Russian roulette and throws a few little spanners in the works from time to time, let's have this modified STV system which nobody actually knows how it works. If we want something a wee bit more conservative, I'm suggesting that we should actually plum for B and go back to the boring devil we know, first past the post.
Can I ask councillor Vandervis whether the modified STV system got it wrong in 2007 or 2010?
It invariably got it wrong, your honour, and the reason it always gets it wrong is because it has these computer programmes with preset threshold limits
that give you a bunch of councillors. I didn't really expect an answer. Oh, sorry.
Did I not get rhetorical there, your honour?
I might add, councillor Vandervis, if you could get your wife to put you at number one place instead of thirty-three, you might have got in on.
I just wanted to ask a question. Given councillor Van Dees's comments, is there some one or some way that we can be better informed on the validity of, of STV voting? By way of explanation through some of whom may be able to give us that information or a paper which relates to the system and the, the robustness of the system?
There is attached to your, to the report, a document paper that outlines it and we have no reason to question the robustness of the system. It's those councils that have adopted STV all use the STV, the standard STV throughout the country. We have no reason to doubt it. You've got nothing to add, Pam? About that, no?
Can I just follow that up?
Yes.
Councillor Bezette? I'm not sure about the detail of what councillor Vandervis said, but I agree about the aspect of who runs these systems. I was quite surprised to see that not all couns, well, I was surprised to see that so many councils had their processing contracted out to whoever that Christchurch outfit was that did ours and see what does get elected. And that other councils didn't necessarily, I don't know, Wellington or someone else was doing it themselves and so on, so if we're going to investigate this, I'd like some information about the, the mechanics of the processing of STV and who does what.
Well, we can follow that up. Separate to the, separate to the resolution in front of the strike. Any further speakers to this?
So, there will be a paper come back to the committee summarising the concerns that councillor.
Well, I think that, I think that would properly come to something for the attention of a Chair at a, at a standing committee meeting and it can be brought through that.
Can we, I just talked to Pam briefly for a second because I'm not sure that that would be what we would do. Can I just talk, I would need to just chat with Pam briefly because.
I'll conclude this decision first and then we can come back. Councillor Bezette, do you wish to exercise your right of reply? All right, I'm going to put it. This is A on twenty-seven point one. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded please.
Vandervis?
You've just got an example of first past the post.
I'm quite glad of it actually. At least everybody knows where they stand.
Now, do you want to, councillor Bezette, do you want to move anything in that regard or are you happy for?
Well, I'd like us to have some more information because the first issue was the, the questions that were raised about the integrity of the process. But I'm also interested in some background information, wherever the sources of who does the processing, who's, who is contracted to do the processing and which authorities using STV do it themselves or have different arrangements?
Most of the councils are split between two contractors, elections.com which we use, which is Christchurch-based and Independent Election Services, which is Auckland-based.
And these are both private operations, are they?
Yes, they are.
I find that pretty scary actually.
And.
We don't use private operations to process votes at parliamentary elections.
To be fair, these are fully audited and there is a high degree of scrutiny, but what I think might be useful, we, we could happily provide a bit of a briefing to councillors, once we pull something together for you on our process, if that would help.
Can do.
Have you that councillor Bezette? All right, we'll move on to item twenty-eight, which is the representation review. And this is something we require to carry out this time. So, I should just overlook the questions on Ms Graham, councillor Van Dees.
On, on question, on recommendation number two, council gives consideration to the means by which it wishes to conduct the representation review, which is kind of okay, but then in question and recommendation number three, it says that if an independent review team is the council's preference, a report prepared for the next council meeting on possible appointments to the review team, who has proposed recommendation number three?
That's my recommendation, it's my report.
So, you've proposed an independent review team in anticipation of recommendation number two, that we've considered the means and wanted independence.
It says if an independent review team is the council's preference.
Yes, but why propose a preference in a recommendation? Surely that simply leads the council.
Quite contrary, it's, it's because there would need to be a report on possible appointments, so you have to have the possibility there in order to allow for what would be required for it. Not assuming anything, it's not prejudging anything.
Well, as, as I see it, it assumes that rather than an independent review team, that the whole council simply would review this, I mean.
Well, that's a possibility in which case the three wouldn't be needed.
I'm concerned that three's there in the first place.
If I might, the, the option, recommendation two is for council to determine if they would like to do it in-house or if they would like to do it independently by what mechanism. If you're of a mind to do it independently, then, then you need to give consideration to recommendation three, which is who you might like to do that review for you as independent members. But the first decision you have to make is what mechanism you wish to use.
Noting that an independent review team was appointed last time. Councillor Bezette, is question time still?
Sorry, no, I was going to move.
Well, I'm happy to keep that in. Any other questions? Right, you're moving councillor Bezette?
Yes, I felt often that if you read a resolution earlier, it makes it awkward for someone to come in from behind you, that's all. Number one, council notes are to be carried out and the, and the other recommendation is that number three, and I'll just take out the word, if that and independent review team is a council's preference and a report be prepared for the next council meeting on possible appointments to the review team.
Second that.
Okay, that's, that's been moved, is there a second to that? Councillor Hawkins? Councillor Bezette, would you like to speak to that? Councillor Hawkins, do you wish to speak to it? Any other speak councillor Vandervis?
Can I just ask a question, what's actually meant exactly by an independent review team?
Mine is, well, I'll get it, Ms Graham, but last time it was, I think it's in the report actually. So, there was in, in the 2009, a review team was appointed consisting of Judge John McDonough, Hillary Allison, Colin Skir, Professor Jeff Kersley and Mayor Peter Chan. That was the team that was, so that's what it's presumably meant. Councillor Bezette?
He has an electoral reformer from way back. And I say that the, I support the recommendations and particularly the idea that, that a review team would be largely independent. I don't mind if there is the mayor on, on board as it, as it was last time, but electors get very suspicious if politicians are deciding their own fate, whether it's a voting system, we've done that, or particularly around the wards and, and boundaries and, and I, I just think that this is the way to go.
Councillor Wilson?
I've had the pleasure of sitting on a representation review committee about nine or ten, possibly twelve years ago and while we were fraught with no, not enough time and no funds to do that work and it was very frustrating, I'm really appreciative of staff bringing this report to us early that we can give it effect. There are several questions that come to mind about having sat, stood for the last three elections that concern me and the number of considerations that this review may have to go through and the consideration that I'd also like seeing coming back is perhaps doing it in two tranches because I think possibly, I mean, it is a huge thing to look at community boards and their role, it's a huge thing to look at whether you have wards or not, no wards and I'm not quite sure at the gamut that people are expecting in this review, but I would be hoping that all things were up in the air to consider to get the best representation and to see what we have in the city. And to that end, I would like some thought about almost having two stages through it because I think it's almost too big to do in one bulk. Bulk iteration, understanding those issues, so, and I'm not quite sure if that provides for that to be done in, in more than, in steps, but I think you want to focus on them quite differently and through different hearings, otherwise it would be rather a support process.
Could I suggest that the, second of the two recommendations then could be that a report be prepared for the next council meeting on options for the process and possible appointments? And that way you can, could give us, they may come back and say. Councillor Bezette, have you that? Councillor Hawkins, you? Councillor Vandervis?
Given that the, that there's a mood to have a report prepared for the next council meeting on possible appointments, how, who prepares that report and these possible appointments are basically going to decide what happens? How, how do you find these people?
I'll be preparing the report with Pam and one of the things we would do for this is advertise. One of the recommendations will be that we would advertise for possible people who are interested. That, that's one option that we would do.
Thank you. Well, come back here for your right of reply.
It was just a question really, just raised because of the answer Ms Graham gave. My understanding is that when the recommendations come back as to possible representation on that review team, that anybody around the table. that anybody around the table can nominate anyone and then we'll have a debate on it. So it is open and I think very fair.
One of, if I may, through, we would ask councillors for any names they thought might be useful as well as part of that process so that we could provide full information so that everyone had an opportunity to consider them.
Would it be possible to get a list of people that were, if you like, qualified or at least experienced in this area that in advance that we could perhaps look at?
Certainly.
Great.
I take it that that is at least partly what's meant by a possible appointment.
Yes.
I would expect that staff would come back with a list that was longer than what we needed. Are there any further speakers? Okay, I'm going to put it. All those in favor, please say aye. Against? Carrie. Right, that takes us to the, I'll move to the chair, that the public be excluded from the following parts of the proceedings of this meeting, named the items 29 to 33. Second, a council stains. I'll put it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?